Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to call a meeting of the Board of Supervisors back to order. We're on item number 29. This is with respect to the appointment of a member of the Carson City Regional Transportation Commission to fill the unexpired term that expires 2019. We have five applications today: Christine, Astor, Donna, Stephen, and Greg. So I think, you know what, we've got everybody in here, we've got them outside.
Yeah, and actually, I just spoke to Donna, and she decided not to interview, so we're down to four. And Christine will go first.
All right, I've got Christine at the table. Okay, hi Christine. Now that you heard us all talking up here about what we're going to do, huh? All these hard, difficult questions. How you doing today?
I'm good. Yes, I would have been better out in the hallway, not knowing all of this, but thank you for letting me in.
Well, you're hired, man. That's all right. You didn't hear any of that, all of the Traffic Committee and all that stuff, so, right? It's pretty good. All right. So just give us a little highlight on why you want to, you know, we know you've been on a Traffic Committee, but kind of just tell us a little bit about yourself, why you want to do it, then I have just a question for you.
Okay. Well, the reason I want to do it is the same reason I wanted to get on the Traffic Committee. As a citizen, I was concerned about the condition of the roads in Carson City. A little bit about me, I've been in Carson City 20 years now, which is pretty sweet. I always felt like it was home. I love the West. I was born a Westerner, even though I was born in Missouri. I'm an engineer, I'm a geological engineer by education. I used to do Superfund cleanups and Department of Defense cleanups. I also did construction in my youth when I was young, so I did buildings and roads and parking lots and that kind of thing. So I have good working knowledge of infrastructure and what's required and what's needed and lots of coordination. I ran several public boards: citizens, business people, regulators, and I chaired them, several of them. One of the ones, I did a lot of public meetings in my day, and I had a job in Hastings, Nebraska, and I had to do bomb retrieval of the region because people had live bombs as doorstops, and so...
Did you hear that, Nick? I was saying, go to his house.
Go to his house, he's probably got some.
I have a few like that.
Yeah. So I've had just a very interesting career and life, and I took years off to raise my family. And I've had lots of non-paying volunteer jobs through the years, and I've been on school boards and was a 4-H leader of the Horse Club. And, you know, just very interesting, yeah, life.
Well, you're not old enough to have done all that, but that's a wonderful, wonderful description of what you've done, that's, you know, how you've been involved. So here's a general question, you know, I know you've been on Traffic Committee. Here's a question that's kind of on that and off that. Tell me what your thoughts are about public transit in Carson City.
In general, like how are we doing?
Yeah, how are we doing? What are your thoughts on it, continue it, not continue it, just kind of?
I think we've made a lot of headway. I think we've made a lot of positive changes to things. I like the jack bus that goes around and connects the communities. I work down in Gardnaville, but I go to Reno, I go to Dayton, I go to Tahoe, so I'm on all those roads. And I think it's very important that we keep people connected, because it's Nevada, and everywhere you go, there are distances between. It's not like the East Coast where everything is crammed together. Everything is distance. And so roads are very important, not just to me personally, but to everyone that lives in Nevada, I believe.
I'm making out with a stoplight down at the junction of Spooner and South Carson Street. When you go to work, do you use that?
Yeah, I go through there.
So you like that?
Do I like it? Depends on which direction you're going.
What time of day?
What time of day. The three-lane Bonanza at the end when I go south to Gardnaville off 580. That's a little wild in the busy times.
All right. Well, glad to have you here, and thanks for applying. Now we're going to turn it over to Supervisor Monikowski. He's got the five-part, six-part question.
Great. Thanks, Mayor. How you doing, Christine?
Good, thanks.
So my question is, can you give us your definition of intermodal transportation and how that is incorporated into a complete streets policy?
Oh, man. Oh, he's going to do one of those kind of things on me.
I told you it was a softball question.
Intermodal transportation. Okay, repeat that question.
Give us your definition of intermodal transportation and how that can be incorporated in a complete streets policy.
I don't know what intermodal is, but I do understand the complete streets concept, if you will, where you have pedestrians, bicycles, and transportation. I'm not really sure what you're looking for, how we do that as an agency, how important that is. That's what South Carson is going to end up being, to connect it to downtown. That's the future of the way they want to do town, city roads, where we incorporate all of those and keep everyone safe.
We'll go this way. You want to...
I'm ready.
All right, ready, go.
Mr. Softball over there. Okay. I'll try one, too. Okay. Hi, Christine.
Hi.
How do you create a successful planning document when we have such limited funding?
Well, again, it always goes back to priorities, and I think that you create a list that has all of the priorities, and you fund the ones that you can, and you take those off the top. And the next year, you relook the ones that didn't get done, and do they move up or do they stay where they are?
Okay. Hi.
Hi.
All right. I've got kind of two questions. One, what thoughts do you have regarding increasing revenue for road maintenance? There's some of the topics on the table are miles driven, a diesel tax, truck weight fees, or is a fuel tax a reasonable solution? So that's one question.
Okay. So the fuel tax is not really enough money, and so they tried to get one passed, and the voters, of course, said no, no tax, no new tax. And they're probably always going to say that. And so I don't know how you all, as a Board of Supervisors, can change that without a vote-to-the-people problem. I think there are some creative ways, and I've seen what the staff has been doing as far as they get ADA money to fix the sidewalks. Therefore, you get to touch that piece of road and fix it while you're at it. So I think they're on the right track. They're always looking for grant money. So I think it's thinking outside the box, very creatively about funding revenues, like where do you find them?
And then my second question is, because you have a very diverse background. In your experience, have you encountered alternative pavement applications that have more longevity, especially in climates like ours?
It's been a long time since I worked with pavement. I mean, I've got another project now that will have a parking lot in small roads too out in Dayton, but there are new technologies available, and I think that the staff has looked into that. I think they're on top of that. They've researched it. Some of it's cost prohibitive. You know, it's really great, brand-new stuff that'll last forever, but we can't afford it. You know, so we have to be realistic in how we approach it. Right now, they look at, like, using the slurries to give longevity to the roads, to the pavement, and we fill the cracks, and, I mean, we're always going to have crack problems. We are in the desert. We have extreme heat, we have extreme cold. So I respect what they've done and what they're doing.
Thank you. Yeah, Christine, you're 10% home with me. You only got another 90% to go because you have a background.
You guys are so encouraging. I just want to say thank you. And thank you to Brad for that, like, heavy-duty jargon question. That was really awesome. Thank you. I'll remember that.
Well, first of all, you're from the show-me state, which is Missouri, and I'm from the sucker state just to the northeast of Illinois. So I'm a sucker, and you can show me if you can.
Okay.
Also, you lived in Hastings, Nebraska, and I lived in Lincoln, Nebraska, so these are helpful. But my question has sort of a play on, off of Karen's question, although you may have already answered it in your presumption that the voters will always say no. Unfortunately, we do have to go to the voters, at least probably, for the money that we need to really do the roads correctly here, the streets and the roads. And I would like to know, even though you presume that they might say no, and they often do, so your presumption isn't a penalty on you, how do you sell it if you think you have a chance? Should we take another bite at the apple and ask for another increase in the fuel tax?
I lost my mic, sorry. I think it's worth taking another shot at it. I do. I think more education to the public, more advertising to the public, more public meetings, inviting them to come and learn. Because a lot of citizens that I talk to complain a lot, and they're not really solutions-oriented, and they think everything should be handled 100% with the way things are. And that's just not reality. It's not. So I think a better public campaign could improve those odds if they could see what they could get for their tax money. They always approve the school bonds, you know, like, yes, we want to improve our high school, we want to do this, that. And people want better roads, they just don't want to pay for it. But I think if you showed them that it really is a small price to pay on that gas tax to increase it, and maybe you increase it 1% or something smaller in smaller bites over a longer period of time where they don't really feel it immediately. But I think when they looked at that, they were just like, oh, no, that's it. And they just slammed the door. So I think it could be done kind of easier, like ease into it with people, and I think they might say yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Christine. Anything you want to add or conclude with? You can even take a shot at Brad here if you want.
I tell you, yeah, it's okay. I'll get him later. It's fine.
All right. Well, we all want to thank you for applying and...
Thank you.
Some great answers and great background, so I don't know if you know the drill, but you're welcome to sit around and listen to what we ask the same questions, so we'll see what they do.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you all.
All right. How you doing, Astor? How's Nevada Green doing today?
Good.
Right in the middle there. There you go. I don't know, Astor, have you been through this before?
One day, yeah.
Yeah, so you know the drill. Sort of. Well, yeah. So we each get to ask questions, and we ask the same questions of everybody. And Astor, the way we start off is, you know, kind of ask you, you know, tell us a little bit about who you are, what your background is, and then why you want to serve on the RTC, then we'll just go from there, okay? Yeah, hit the button.
My name is Astor Germa, and my profession is I'm a planner and economic development professional. And I work, my first job is working for the city, so I have a great nostalgia I have and passion. And the second one is more so research, evaluation, consulting. And that is my work in both comprehensive approach of regional planning or city planning or combine various two, three counties. In my work, it's a lot of thinking, analyzing, evaluating, understanding required. So I'm getting used to pick how we prioritize projects and how we read them, understand them within the city comprehensive plan example or within the regional planning, so how it fits together. So this is a very important aspect of skill, to be able to pick a project, because in a regional system, everything is related together. So if we don't understand how it fits together and create that harmony, we may create disorderly planning or something like that. So that is my expertise. And so I know how to read documents, rules, regulations. I know how to interpret them. That's all my life, the last over 20 years' work, so.
Thanks, Astor. My question to get started here, talking about how everything is connected, what are your thoughts on public transit?
Public transportation is really, the culture's changing, as you know, the way we design it's changing. Before, we focused on serving one element, which is maybe the motorist towards that goal, or we don't mix the other part of the walkable or connectivity, a kind of complete street type of design so that we can serve the public, the businesses, and the citizen, so that they can use safely the streets and the roads. And then the traffic and the congestion, all is, we start seeing it as a whole picture than we used to focus on having a street or road or construction. We do that. So, for example, the Carson City, they have their own project which fits in their comprehensive plan. It has a vision, it has a goal, it has how it serves its own community, businesses, everybody equally. And then the other, on the regional system also, how do we create that corridor, that connection with another neighboring counties or town? How do we create that connection with that, too? So before, it's just linear, having the transportation from A to Z, but now it's not linear anymore. So we have other elements we need to take into consideration, and this is my, I believe in it, too, so that we can serve the public and then we can use infrastructure efficiently. That is very important for the city, too. Using the, having a street, and we need to have from A to B, but we need to use it efficiently by serving some other elements, the business and others, and the public and bikeable and all the stuff.
Okay, good. Who wants to go next? Anybody? Start down here. John?
Sure. We tried to get the fuel tax increased in the last election cycle, and the public here turned it down. If we take another bite at that apple, how can we sell it to the public as something that's in their best interests? What are your approaches on that idea, if we do that?
I have observed in working different states and counties and regional things, preparing for public hearing as a consultant, preparing documents for them. One is missing is communication. Communication means, do we really convey the idea of that project to the public? For example, if we start in a project, oh, we will have a street from here to, we need to have it, so what? But if we really studied very well in linking to the benefit by having such project, it benefits the public, it benefits the businesses, it benefits any interested parties, which is me and you and other people, too. So the way mostly we focus a project, instead of seeing it within the vision of the Carson City, for example, in the planning, what we want to achieve, this is part of it, that's why we want to do this project. So we need to change our approaches instead of focusing and segmented approach, just that is a project we are going to do, so we need to increase. But why we increase? How we involve the public into understanding it? This is, that's why most of, not in my backyard syndrome, all these things happening, we don't really express it openly, this is why, and within that, the comprehensive plan. And then we show them the vision, that is a vision, that is, we help them to visioning their city. If not, many people, they oppose. Of course, there are some people they may oppose, but not the majority would be.
Good afternoon, Astor. How do we create successful planning documents when we have such limited funding?
Well, first of all, use the volunteers, so, but, yeah. One thing is, we need to start outlining what we vision for our city. After we vision for our city, we put together the elements that is relevant for the city to grow, because the city, they have financial constraint. We need to think of that in order to prioritize, but we need to have the lay, lay the groundwork for this is what the planning should look like, and then we go through. That is, you are doing it. But we need to have well-articulated vision for each objectives and related to the master plans or the comprehensive plan. That will guide us, okay, this is a picture we have, this is where we want to go, this is what we are doing. We have, for example, transportation planning. In that transportation planning, it should have the value. That plan should bring us money or businesses or attraction. If it doesn't bring us that plan, it just, it's just kind of losing the battle of convincing things. So always, we should, the value, what type of value it bring to us, to the city for bringing money, attracting businesses, doing lots of things. What is the value of having that project? So if we tailor it in that way, the planning document, I think, and then we need to have that outreach, public outreach, that is relevant, just not only explaining, that is what we are doing, no, that is the value. It brings the plan. We need to attach to the value. So it's very important to have that tailored, well-researched, and best practices. Learning from others, and I'm good at it.
Hello, Astor.
Okay, hi.
My question for you is, please give us your definition of intermodal transportation and how that can be incorporated into a complete streets policy.
Complete streets, okay. The intermodal transportation is a transportation where we create a relationship, connect, we create a connectivity, connections between other authorities or roads and coming from, for, from here to Douglas County when we go, there are roads, they are connected to take us to Douglas County or, or, in our region, around in our region. And then, so we need to understand that, and then within that intermodal transportation or connection, connectivity, because it's a different type of, we have a highway, we have express lane, we have a different type of speed limits. Roads, they are connected to each other to take us from one place to another one. And what is the second question?
How that is integrated into a complete streets policy?
Exactly. So when we have a complete street design, we have, as you know, for example, from here, we create that, in the complete street means serving all the people means. We have the motorist, we have the bikes list maybe, and then we have, or pedestrian, we have a safe crossing. You see, that is kind of a corridor, a dynamic we have. And then that road would continue to, for example, Douglas County. And then when it goes to, the speed, the offer, and everything, it's diminished. It's not many people that are going by the road, so up to Carson City example, I'm in Costco, before Costco, we have that dynamic. So the complete street means serving all the people, all the people, the businesses, and then all this stuff. It's a little bit can be crowded, too. So we need to pay attention to the way we design it. And then it go out, out of that complete street design to another mode of transportation would be to go to Douglas County or something like that. So that is a fitting we need well-articulated and designed, because we serve everybody in the businesses so that it helps us also, people coming from Douglas County and from another place, they can have a place also to walk around, to shop, and then to have time. So we serve that. And then after that, it is getting, changing the mode of transportation afterwards and to become single or something like that.
Hi, Astor. My question tags on to John's. In terms of what thoughts do you have regarding increasing revenue for road maintenance? There's been a variety of different things discussed in different areas: miles driven, diesel tax, truck weight fee, or is a fuel tax a reasonable solution?
This is a tricky question. This is a tricky question. Do you know why? Because before we proposed any tax-related things for any transportation, we need to study at the point and call. We need to understand our residents. And we need to understand and evaluate how this proposal versus this proposal makes sense for our needs. So I can't pick today and here, but I can say there is a strategy to approach it. We can calculate everything and some, some people, they may not be happy completely. So we'll see how our residents respond to that needs, I mean, that offer. I don't know, you do it surveying or get some, I hope Carson City has a community-oriented outreach program. It's different from customer-oriented program, I mean outreach. So this is, the community-oriented outreach program help actually to filter out a little bit which direction we can go before we spend lots of money and before we make angry our residents. So that is my approach, we did that. So first, we need to go, we should have a choices, five things to do. We need to study the background of the five things we are going to propose. The background is based over our region, of course, we don't compare to another thing, but it's good to learn from another two. But after that, and then if we pick a one or two, we need to have a good explanation how that bring values to the public. We need to have that ingredient to help them, to convince them to accept one of it. And then we have one left and then that will be, and then we proceed, the public hearing, the, all this, all this, whatever it is, on the ballot and then all that procedure, we'll continue doing it. But it's, it is, that's why some ballot is so failed, even they are very good, because we, we, we may not do, I don't want to criticize, but we may not do that step of knowing, understanding things involving the public to understand, to brainstorm it and then attach it to the value and then that will be, that's my approach. I can't tell you which one is good or not.
Thanks, Esther. Anything you want to add? Any, any answers you want to, anything, anything you want to add about?
Well, just one thing I wanted to, I'm always fascinated by research and evaluation and prioritize things. So I think my skill is, will provide a good foundation and contribute to the skill that you have already have. And then I have a passion, because my first work was in a city, in Addis Ababa, Ethiopia, and, and afterwards working with the city government, regional government and multi-agencies, starting learning how it is relevant to be able to understand and be able to evaluate which, why is it relevant to pursue a certain project or not. So that is I can bring. And the second is, my knowledge is very update. I read, I'm a member of American Planning Association and my organization, we do lots of research. So I love reading. So that is I can bring.
Thank you, Esther. Now you're welcome to listen to, we ask the same questions, you're welcome to either hang out in here and listen or as you wish. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Esther. Afternoon, Stephen.
Hello.
How you doing?
Pretty good.
The RTC, I thought you won the trains.
Need a warm-up place for you.
I, I know, you know, but you know, we got all these, you know, it's this energy conservation stuff, you know? It's pretty, pretty chilly out there. How you doing today?
Very good, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good.
Good afternoon, supervisor.
Stephen, I know you've been through this drill, so let me just ask you, you know, just briefly tell us, you know, a little bit about yourself. We all know, I think, a lot, but tell us a little bit about yourself, why it fits with the RTC and then why you want to serve and then we'll get to questions and we'll go there.
Stephen Lincoln, candidate for RTC. I have been in Carson City since 1977 and have been selling real estate here since September of 88, so quite some time. I've served on a number of boards and commissions and it's been a couple of years that, that I've had one of those chairs up there, so I figured maybe it's time to put in a, put in a stint as a, on the RTC.
Chairs, I don't think have changed. Maybe they have.
They have changed.
I think we have new chairs up here.
Beautiful plush red ones, the last time I had.
Those old chairs, the springs were coming through. Sometimes it helped.
Moved things along.
All right. I'm sorry, go ahead.
The, my interest in the RTC is due to my recent service on the traffic committee. I was pointed to that through our Board of Realtors as the Realtor voice and what, what the road department had to do or had to say about potential investments in the roads and infrastructure in that regard. So that was of interest to me. I was doing my miles for taxes just recently and I, I put 13,494 miles on these roads last year. So I see a lot of them, I see the condition of them and I think that, after serving on traffic, that the commission's doing a pretty good job with what they have to work with. So.
13,000 miles?
13,494, just added it up.
Pretty good, pretty good. So, limit, here's a general question, Stephen. Give me, give us your thoughts on public transportation, its importance or non-importance or how do you think we're doing on that in Carson City?
Well, it's quite a bit different than when I first moved here, there was nothing. And it's exciting to see real buses too. I've had friends and family members come in and they see the little shuttle buses and they shake their head and they said, that's your bus system. And I say, well, that's what we have right now, but it's nice to see full-size buses. I think it's important, there's probably room for expansion. I was talking to a fellow in the hallway and wondering if there's anything we could do with co-opting with Washoe County to get something further than just the one transportation, just the shuttle, the, the one that we have for the, the workers basically. And I thought that's a good idea. So it's, I think it's something we have room for improvement and, but we're doing well.
Thanks, Stephen. Okay. Who wants, we, okay, John, we'll go this way, that way, won't we?
Hi, Stephen.
Hi, Karen.
Well, of course, we have more road maintenance than we have money. And what thoughts do you have regarding increasing revenue for road maintenance? You know, there's several thoughts on the table, miles driven, diesel tax, truck weight fee, or is a fuel tax the reasonable solution?
I think the indexing of the gas tax was, was something I supported. The miles driven, I would personally, personally frown on that one, but I want to see what's best for the community. So I would, I would certainly do that. But I think the indexing would be the way to go.
Hi, Stephen.
Hello.
If you could please give us your definition of intermodal transportation and how it can be incorporated in a complete streets policy?
The, well, first of all, I think the complete streets is a great idea and I'm anxious to really see what happens with South Carson Street. And it's gotta be, it's gotta be safe. Safety's gotta be the number one priority. That's one of the things on the traffic committee that we researched with regard to where the money should go and one of the top priorities was safety. And what we did is we approved or recommended traffic, the flashing signal lights to go across Carson Street and also the one on, over there by Slot World. So that's the big concern. So when you're having the intermodal and you have the pedestrians, the cars, the bicycles on the same roadway, that would be the, that would be my biggest concern, is the safety issue.
Good afternoon, Stephen.
Hello.
Okay. How do you create successful planning documents when we have such limited funding?
Just work within the budget. That's all you can do. You just have to deal with what you have.
It's hard, huh?
It's hard.
Stephen?
Yes, John?
Since you answered Karen's question the way you did and mine's a sort of a follow-on to hers, how would you go about selling increased indexing of the fuel tax? We took one bite at the apple and the people said no. Is it like a bond issue, do you keep going back or do you sell it better or how, how do you get them to see this thing differently?
That's a good question. I don't, I don't know how you can sell it any different. I think you would just have to go back and it would just be more education. The, the problem we're going to have in the future is with, with more electric vehicles and they aren't paying a gas tax. So I think that's one of the reasons to educate people that it has to be indexed. And then again, you're going to have to look to see how you tax those folks that are using the road as much as somebody that's paying a fuel tax. So I, I think education and going back to the well.
So I only asked one question, but since you're here, I know what your background is. Carson City has an ordinance that precludes tracks in Carson City. Remember that one?
No, I don't remember. I didn't know that.
When they were going to put a train?
On Curry Street.
From Curry Street? People didn't want it, so they put an ordinance in and said, you can't do that.
I'll be done.
What do you think about that?
I disagree with that.
Time's gone?
Yeah. I think any form of mass transportation, and that's the only one that's feasible, is on tracks.
And I asked that, folks listening here, because I know Stephen's been interested in the train for years, so, all right. Anything you want to add? Concluding comments, Stephen?
I just look forward to having the opportunity again to serve Carson City and it was exciting, as I mentioned before, on the traffic committee. So I look to possibly be the one that can step up and benefit that new committee and see what we can do for Carson City. When I joined the traffic committee, they asked what a big concern was and mine was with maintaining and improving the roads in the industrial and commercial areas so we can be sure to get the businesses to come in here to see that they have nice roads in front of their properties that they're going to, they're going to buy or they're going to build. So I think still that that's one of my, would be one of my goals, is to make sure that we're enticing the industries that we want to come into our town.
Thanks, Stephen. On behalf of all of us up here, thanks for applying and thanks for your service to the committee.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Bring in the Navy.
You got a conflict?
I have a conflict. Bring in the Navy. Hello, Greg. Good to see you again. When did we see you, last week, two weeks ago?
Last meeting.
Last meeting. Two weeks ago.
Make sure the Navy found his.
I know, he's, you know.
Oh, ow.
When's your evaluation coming up anyway, man?
Make sure he doesn't let you wreck his show.
Yeah, man, I totally spoke.
Make sure he didn't take a wrong turn somewhere.
Run the ground.
Well, you know, kind of on a serious note, we kid about that, but you know, we've had a couple of these ships that have, in my view, shouldn't have been colliding with people. So, I mean, we need to spruce up our seamanship a little bit, so. Anyway, how you doing?
I'm doing very well.
Good to see you again. How you all doing? I know we suggested you apply for the RTC and you put in your application and we kind of all know a little bit about your background. I don't think we've forgotten over two weeks. But why don't you tell us, you know, how, how your background might fit with the RTC?
Well, my background.
So people know a little bit, but if you want to talk a little bit about yourself too, because people may not have heard two weeks ago, so.
Sure, sure. So my name is Greg Stedfield. I actually graduated from Reed High up in Sparks and went to UNR. Didn't quite know where I wanted to land, so I ended up in the military. And when I got out, I settled in Sacramento, got married, going on 29 years ago. Have a son and a daughter and two granddaughters. Unfortunately, all of them are in Texas. I'm also a licensed professional engineer, currently in California, Nevada, Oregon and Texas. I had more, but I let them go because I didn't need them anymore. So my experience as an engineer is pretty much bin-lan development in anywhere from single-family residential through commercial. I've done aircraft hangars on Guam, I've done schools in Okinawa. So I've, I've done a lot of different stuff over my career. So we relocate, I'm sorry, relocated back here last year. My mom has, you know, been in Hidden Valley this whole time, so it was a chance for me to get, you know, closer to my mom, just keep an eye on her, because I'm an only child. So, you know. So that's what, what landed us back here and so far we just absolutely love the area. But then again, I liked it. I've always tried to find a way to get back here and it just finally happened.
Thanks, Greg. The question I have for you on this, in this area is, give us your thoughts on public transportation, how are we doing with that in Carson City, doing enough, too much? What's your thoughts on that?
My, my impressions are that you're pretty right-sized. It's really hard with such a small, relatively small population. There's, there's only so much that you can do that really kind of pencils out and is efficient. You know, one of the things that, that has been kicked around up in Reno is some kind of light rail, but there's just not enough of a population base in the overall area to make that kind of transportation pencil out. So your best bang for the buck is, is buses. And whether those are, you know, electric or propane, you know, to kind of reduce the carbon footprint, you know, depends on, on, you know, how extensive the routes are. But, but I think what we have here is, is pretty right-sized.
Thanks. All right. Which way? John, you want to start this time or we'll go that way? How's that?
Sure. All right. Couple of years ago, or a year and a half ago, we had on the ballot indexing of the gas tax. They do have it up in Washoe and down in Clark County, but we don't have it here because the voters rejected it. If we tried to take another bite at that apple and convince the public, how would we go about it? What outreach, what public relations strategies would you recommend that we perhaps didn't try last time?
Unfortunately, I don't have the perspective of what you guys tried last time. It's always a tough one because nobody wants to spend more money. One thing I like about living down here versus Reno is gas is what, 40 cents a gallon cheaper? You know? However, with vehicles becoming more efficient, we're selling less gas, which means you're getting less, less tax revenue off of the gas sales. So unfortunately, they're just going to have to go up. Now, sometimes people just don't, I guess, get it, you know, with, with their cars getting 40 miles to the gallon now, you know? But somehow, some way, these improvements have to be paid for. Whether it's maintenance on the existing roads, which I'm sure a lot of people complain about potholes and cracks and, and all that, or new improvements need to be done. Or, you know, like the recon, construction of South Carson, you know, that just costs money and there's only so much that the commission can do or the city can do to get money from the, either from the state or from the federal government, so. But I would probably lean more on, you know, this is why we need to do this and this is what it's going to pay for.
Karen, you want to follow up on that? I mean, your questions are kind of closely related.
Okay, my question kind of tags on his, Greg. You know, we have more road maintenance than we have money, of course. And so what are your thoughts regarding increasing revenue for road maintenance? There's several things on the table that have been talked about, not, maybe not here, but elsewhere. Miles driven, diesel tax, truck weight fee, or is a fuel tax really the solution for road maintenance?
I would, I would be really curious. I think, because isn't the state of Washington is running that pilot program on miles driven? I'd really like to see how that works out because that seems to be about the most fair. I would, I would be really curious. I think, because isn't the state of Washington that's running that pilot program on miles driven? I'd really like to see how that works out, because that seems to be about the most fair. We had lived in Texas for six or seven years, seven years. And they do a lot of toll roads out there, which, after fashion, I think is brilliant, because why would I, as a resident of Fort Worth, want to pay for a freeway in Houston? Right? So, kind of the same deal with the miles driven, which, you know, essentially is another tax. But here, again, you need those monies to just maintain your roads. I know that there's a thought out there that patching potholes and fixing cracks is not an efficient use of funds. Unfortunately, it really is, because if you keep the water out of it, then you won't have massive payment failures, you know. So that's just part of, you know, part of the life of the asphalt, you know. So, anyway, I would really like the miles driven. That seems to be about the most equitable.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
So, how do we create successful planning documents when we have such limited funding?
Yeah, I think those are sometimes mutually exclusive. Well, you know, I was reviewing some of the older agendas for the RTC and trying to go for, you know, some of the grant money from the federal government. You know, that's a way to make the dollars stretch, because... Easy Marine. Hey.
Okay, I'm going to cut off his bike here in a second.
Because I noticed you guys have just recently done that for some bike path improvements. So with the 5% match, you know, that really kind of starts stretching your dollars. And so that's, that's part of the planning process, is where you're going to get your funding. And then, you know, look at where your revenues are going to be in certain years. You probably, you know, working with Campo, you're going to have to work out what year makes sense to do a project based on funding and what we can get out of either the state or the feds.
They save me for last because I have the easiest question.
I doubt that.
You're right. Greg, could you please give us your definition of intermodal transportation and how it can be integrated in a complete streets policy?
Are you talking intermodal as far as, you like, car to bus to, or are you talking about intermodal as far as freight? There's a couple of different intermodals.
The former.
Okay, so, one story I like to tell is when I was living in Sacramento, we moved our office. And so I went on RTC's, not RTC, can't think of what the... Anyway, I went onto their website down there and tried to figure out how long it would take me to get to work using public transportation. And it was a combination of walking, taking the bus to the light rail station, taking the light rail to the closest station, and then either walking or taking the bus. In Sacramento, it's kind of hard, because it's just such a large footprint. It would have taken me two hours each way to get to work. And as much as I would love to reduce my carbon footprint, so to speak, I just don't have four hours in a day to donate to it, you know. But this would be a really good area to have, you know, your local bus service, and then have an express to go up to Reno to tie into their bus system. So you kind of have the two municipalities tied together with, with, you know, bus service. There's no... One thing that Fort Worth had with Dallas is they had what was called the Trinity Express. And it was actually heavy rail that went between Fort Worth and Dallas. And then it tied into the light rail system in Dallas, so you can go anywhere in the city, basically, from there. So, done right, it could be really good.
So tie that to the complete street policy.
Well, if you don't have complete streets, you don't have safe pedestrian access to bus stations. Because when I think about complete streets, it's a full right-of-way construction, sidewalk to sidewalk, so you have a safe place for people to walk. So they can walk from their residence to a bus station to tie into the, tie into the system.
Thanks, Greg. Anything you want to add? Conclusion?
Really, what I'd like to, I'd just like to say that I think it would be not only a challenge, but I think it'd be fun to be on the commission. And like I said in my application, I've always wanted to do something like this, because I think a lot of people kind of sit back and, and, I don't want to say they necessarily complain, but they don't really offer up a solution or help. I, you know, you see that a lot in church. I ran sound for my church for a lot of years. And you have 5% of the people doing 100% of the work, and the rest of them just being obstructionist. So, anyway, that's the biggest reason why I applied, is I just like to be a part of the solution and be a part of my community and watch it grow up.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Great answers. Okay. And there's no good answers or bad answers, by the way. Well, articulately said, so put it like that.
Thank you.
Alright. Now, we have to do the hard, I think we're done now, right? Now, it's the hard part of this stuff. So I have to go to the bathroom.
Don't.
We'll take a two-week break.
Did I really say that?
You gotta get laughed, man.
Alright. Well, you know, as kind of usual, we get, you know, four great applicants who all come with different backgrounds and things they can offer for the committee. And they're all committed to our city. And, you know, these are, these are just really tough. So, I don't know who wants to start. You want to? Go ahead.
I agree with Bob. Everyone was excellent in terms of all those that applied. But I do have to say that I feel that Greg was the most solution-oriented and the one that was willing to think outside the box a little bit more than everyone else. For that reason, since we have more road maintenance than we do money, I think it's important to have someone that can think outside the box and look towards alternate solutions. And he's got diverse background in terms of the areas that he has worked for his engineering. And I think that, too, brings a lot to the table. So my vote's for Greg.
Make it two for Greg.
Well, I'll make you guys irrelevant.
I've been irrelevant before.
Alright. We'll entertain a motion to appoint Greg Steadfield to the RTC.
I'll do it. I move to appoint Greg Steadfield to the Carson City Regional Transportation Commission to fill a partial term that expires December of 2019.
On the motion, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Pose nay. Gary Dunn. Okay. Welcome aboard. Sailor?
We were going to make him have a conflict event.
Alright, we'll take a break. We're going to be in a break for five minutes here, so stand easy. All right, we're gonna call a meeting of the board supervisors back to order. We're now on the next to the last item, the last item being public comments. So we're now on the issue with respect to the First Amendment Cooperative Agreement between Carson City and the CTA with respect to funding issues and things of that nature. So who's taking us through this? Nancy, you're doing it?
Nancy.
Okay, Nancy.
Okay. Like you said, this is the First Amendment amended cooperative agreement between Carson City and the Carson City Cultural, Culture and Tourism Authority. And it's to add the provision for the city to administer the position of the Arts and Cultural, Culture Director. For some reason, I can't say culture. It'll be re-titled as a coordinator based on the city's classification guidelines. This position will be responsible for the implementation of the Carson City Arts and Culture, Culture Master Plan, as well as the cultural tourism campaign. And it'll be funded by the 1% increase in the transient lodging tax, tax that you guys approved back in May of 2016. The Carson City Cultural Commission, which serves as an advisory role to the Board of Supervisors, is charged with the oversight of the master plan. So it makes sense for this to be a city function. And originally, on the board, on the staff report, we had planned to add this, an Arts and Culture, Culture Department to the general fund. But after discussion with the finance department, we thought that it would probably be better to be a special revenue fund, so there'd be more accountability and transparency. And that's all that I had on the item. And we have Mark Salinas here, who is the Arts and Culture Director. And if you had any questions?
Where's the CTA on this?
Oh, the CTA voted unanimously on February 12 to approve the agreement.
Nancy, in terms of how it's classified in the budget, will that assist Mark for more transparency in terms of applying for grants and so forth going forward?
Yes, so the entire 1% will be its own special revenue fund.
So thank you for changing the funding source. That, that really makes me a lot more comfortable that it'll be in a special revenue fund so that we can have transparency to the hotel operators and everyone as we committed. I just want to ask on a technical question, just so that we can be clear between the CTA and the city. I know there's a few outstanding grants that the art director was working on within the CTA side of the house. Do the grants move over? Are we gonna just work on, you'll fulfill any of the commitments within those grants? What process do you see us doing to eliminate the three outstanding grants?
We had talked about that with Mark, and I think what we'll do is, since I think those grants were given to the CTA, that we would still administer... Is that correct or no?
Hello, Mark Salinas, Director of Arts and Culture, for the record. In my mind, I was just trying to figure out which three ones they were. At the top of my list is the NEA grant that we won, the Big Reed grant. The other two would be the Reimagine Space.
And Closing Out, I think, the only Nevada Day closeouts.
That grant was, I was the author of that grant, but that was submitted by the Nevada Day LLC. And according to the grantor, the Nevada Department of Tourism, Kerry Freelo, who coordinates those rural grants, that they are, it is their responsibility to fill out that paperwork. And I did do some paperwork for that, but Ken Hamilton's out of the country right now.
So you're thinking there's only two left? That, that one's ready to close? You're thinking the Nevada Day one? You've completed your role?
The marketing manager submitted a grant, a marketing grant for Big Reed, or for True Grit, Big Reed. But I'm still in the process of putting the event, those events together. So once I put together that strategy, I can forward it to them and that paperwork will be their obligation. But for our purposes here, I would say it would be Reimagine Space and True Grit, the Big Reed grant, the federal grant, and the state tourism grant for, pardon me, the RAC grant for Reimagine Space.
So I wasn't clear. You're gonna, you'll help them fulfill their obligation?
I'm gonna fulfill the obligations.
Did I understand that right? Okay.
For the task at hand.
Okay.
And then, you know, we were discussing the other day as far as the, you know, the True Grit events are going to commence May 3 and run a month. And that those purchases towards that reimbursement, that $14,000 reimbursement would be on the 1%, the P card, towards those expenses to, to make.
Okay. So I just, again, I just want to make sure there's no obligations. I don't want to turn around and have the CTA not meet its grant obligations because the city... So we'll continue any grant obligation of match or whatever's necessary as written.
Right. I'll have to look at the grant documents and just see who's responsible for what and we'll make it work within the accounting and charge it to the correct place.
That, that's what I'm interested in. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, and I'm, you know, the grants are applied under a certain Dun's number. So I'm just wondering if, you know, if what we had before has to go through that tracking as opposed to how we go forward going under the city's purview.
You know, I'm, I'm a pretty proficient grants writer. And last year, I brought in 25% of, of my salary in on grants. And that's not, that's the awarded amount. It's not even the match, the one-to-one match through in-kind donation or otherwise. So I'm, I'm curious to learn what the, you know, provided we go forward with the city's policy on that, so I can follow the protocol. Yeah.
Then on the Reimagine Grant, that's kind of stalled, right? I don't think anything's been done on that.
So the Reim... I met with RAC in February and wanted to steer that project so it would be in line with the Big Reed grant. And that was to address blight and vacancy, revitalize public spaces, commercial spaces. And so two projects are at hand for that $10,000 that RAC donated towards that cause. One would be the, a wheat paste on the back of a commercial building that the Adams Hub connected me with the owner and I got permission for. And that is a property on Stewart Street, which I think NAI, Bruce Roberts, is the realtor of. And the proposal there was to do a wheat paste on the side of the building that faces the empty parking lot. Another proposal was to do some work on the alleyway behind the Horseshoe Club, a series of four tiny wheat pastes on a pre-existing architectural element there. And then finally, the revitalization of the corner here, the corner lobby of the theater. It's a bit dusty and old, and I thought that would be a great spot to install all of the artwork that the city has claimed as an asset now from Capital Collage. So we have everything from a nine-foot-by-nine-foot pan-painted banner, parasols, pinatas, four-foot-by-four-foot oil painting. I did the measurements out there and I think it looks spectacular.
And maybe this fol... Oh, I'm sorry. And maybe this follow-up is really between CTA and our accounting staff and then RAC also, because I know they did a reallocation process with the $10,000 for the Reimagine Space to what you just discussed. But my concern is to make sure we don't have any lapse in a grant, because I believe CTA went for a grant and used RAC money as a match for the $10,000 to get some more money. And so that RAC change or scope would have to come back to us anyway, right? So if it interferes with a grant, we could just turn that down. That's all I want to make sure, is we don't mess up any grant requests, requirements.
Everything I've shared today, I went in front of the grant on February and got their approval.
The tourism grant to change? Isn't the RAC money a part of a match on a Reimagine window space?
I spoke to Kerry Freelo from the tourism, who was going to match the five of the $10,000 that the, that the CTA wanted to donate to that cause. And she said that there's no problem in not using that. It would not affect future eligibility for the CTA or myself in producing, submitting grants. And that that money would be easily allocated to another project at hand that she has. She assured me there was no problem with that. I met with her in person last week.
Okay, well, I'm comfortable with leaving staff and the CTA to work out whether or not, you know, it's, it's not a city grant, so please work that out, just so that we don't have any grant issues.
And if we have to transfer money from the 1% to, for the match on CTA's end, we'll do everything according to the grant documents.
Thank you. And I can live with that, then. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else on the board? Public comment? Anybody want to weigh in? Don't see any. Board, be ready. Who wants to do it? Supervisor Bunkowski.
I move to approve the First Amendment Cooperative Agreement between Carson City, a consolidated municipality and political subdivision of the state of Nevada, and the Carson City Culture and Tourism Authority, a county fair and recreation board created by the city pursuant to NRS 244A for administrative services and facility use and management to be funded by 2% of the total 11% transient lodging tax rate.
Sorry, on discussion? I forgot something. Would you consider adding on to your motion that the new special revenue fund will not be subject to cost allocation because the 1% fee is already an administrative charge? Because you need to let staff know that that won't be eligible for cost allocation. Sorry, forgot to mention that earlier.
I would agree to that as an addition, an amendment to my motion.
Thank you.
And I would...
Any further discussion? All right. Are we ready for a move? We're ready for a vote? All right. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Oppose, nay. Kerry, thanks. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you very much. I think this adds to the durability of the infrastructure I'm trying to make. It adds to the longevity of not only my personal career, but the artists and arts organizations, some of which are here today, who I feel obligated to represent. So thank you very much.
Yeah, they're back there clapping for you.
Mark, if I could. Mark, did you by chance catch our earlier conversation about the downtown gateway signage?
I just read it on the agenda, but I'm a bit familiar with it.
Okay, we had some conversation about bringing the Arts and Culture Commission in on some conceptual design on that, so...
Sure. I think I'd be more than happy to entertain that from last, last time I had part of the conversation. I think, I think that organization came in front of the Cultural Commission last year or a year or two ago.
This is different.
Okay.
This is part of the redevelopment of South Carson Street and doing gateway signage coming in. And this is different from that presentation.
Okay, I gotta, I've been, I've been given the hook.
Yep.
Even though I thought I could make the argument that it's related, it's not. So any public comment?
Thank you.
Now, you're on public comment. You can comment what you want.
He's like, forget it.
All right. All right. Anybody else? We ready then, board, to call it a day for the day?
Let's call it a day.
3 o'clock? All right. Unless there's an objection, hearing no objection, we're adjourned.